We're going to call this meeting of the Brooklyn Regional Planning Committee into order at 7:05. This will be a virtual meeting as allowed by Chapter Two of the Acts of 2013 extending certain provisions of the open meeting rule until March 31, 2025. This meeting is being recorded and
Massive inspiration. Yeah. Lots of recommendations we shared and for him to
Somebody raise your hand if they're recording.
There's Tammy's AI Notetaker, which is an Otter AI.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Tammy. I didn't realize it was signing in. You can you can cut it off if you want.
Oh, no. Well, you're welcome to record.
Oh, okay. Okay.
You've got to notify me. That's all.
All right. Sorry.
No, no problem. Okay, so we're good with that. Let's do the roll. Kate, are you going to do the roll?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
So I will call each town in alphabetical order and with the delegate, if present, please say your full name and that you're a delegate, and then the alternate, your full name and that you're the alternate. And that way we'll find out which towns are represented too. Adams.
John Duval, alternate.
Alfred. Beckett. Teshar.
Peter Crowe, delegate.
Parksburg. Dalton. Egremont.
Mary McGurn, delegate.
Florida. Great Barrington.
Pedro Pachano, delegate.
Malcolm Thicke, alternate.
Hancock. Tinsdale. Lanesboro.
Leanne Yinger, delegate.
Lee.
Buck Donovan, delegate.
Lennox. Monterey. Oh, nice, Laura. Mount Washington. New Ashford. New Marboro. North Adams. Otis. Peru. Pittsfield.
Sheila Irvin, delegate.
Richmond. Fandusfield. Savoy. Sheffield.
Sari Hoy, delegate.
Lee Butala, alternate.
Stockbridge.
Christine Rasmussen, alternate.
Peeringham. Actually, we heard from Amanda Hamilton that she had a prior commitment. Washington. Paul Don. Washington. We hope reconnect. West Stockbridge. We actually also heard from Chris Tonini that he had a prior commitment. Williamstown. Samantha might come late. We have Roger. Okay. Windsor.
Douglas McNally, delegate.
I believe Ben was also had a prior commitment. Thank you.
Hey.
Want to say Laura Menzies, delegate, is here.
Oh, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Laura.
Yep.
And I, this is Don Gagnon, Washington. I don't know if you heard me.
Oh, good.
Gotcha.
How we did. Thanks, Don.
Yep.
Okay. The next order of business is a vote to approve the minutes of the November 21, 2024 Full Commission Meeting. We have a motion and a second, please.
Don move. Pedro Pachano, Great Barrington.
Thank you, Pedro.
Second, Christine Rasmussen, Stockbridge.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The minutes were included in the meeting packet. Are there any corrections or comments about the minutes? Hearing none, then we'll proceed to a vote.
All righty. John Duval?
Yes.
Peter Crowe?
Yes.
Mary McGurn?
Yes.
Pedro Pachano?
Yes.
Leanne Yinger?
Yes.
Buck Donovan?
Yes.
Laura Menzies?
Yes.
Sheila Irvin?
Yes.
Sari Horr, Sari Hoy?
Yes.
Christine Rasmussen?
Yes.
Don Gagnon?
Yes.
Douglas McNally?
I have to abstain. I had to leave the meeting early.
Thanks.
Okay. That passes. The next order of business, in fact, the next two orders, comments, just remember that we can't deliberate on things that are not on the agenda, but we welcome any comments, especially things that might have to do with future meetings. We'll start with comments from delegates and alternates. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring up at the meeting that's not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the next order, which is comments from the public. So anyone who is not a delegate and alternate that would like to make a comment to the commission. Okay. Then we'll go on to the next order of business, which is the presentation of the Executive Committee Actions. These were included in your packet. If you have any questions about those or any comments, please express them. Okay, no comments on Executive Committee Actions. Okay. Then we'll go on to the next order of business, which is a presentation and discussion about the bike and multi-youth path planning and development in Berkshire County. And we have Nick on hand here, Nick Russo, to, and I think, Nick, you're going to take over the screen and prepare presentations. Is that right?
That's correct. I can either share my screen or I don't know if it wants to be run remotely for the slideshow.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yep.
Go ahead and do that, Nick.
Okay. I will get that started. All right. Shrimp that. All right. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see some of you again or meet some of you for the first time. My name's Nick Russo, Senior Transportation Planner for the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. Just wanted to give a quick update about the state of bicycling initiatives and projects in Berkshire County as of January. So I'll dive right into it. So some things that are either just starting up or things to watch in the near future. The first being the upcoming Vision Zero Plan. This is kind of the next step of the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant, which actually just closed yesterday. So we're officially closed on the federal grant, Planning Grant. So it's been the past year. So now we're planning to move into an implementation phase, which will involve grant application for implementation funds and also a public involvement and leadership and goal-setting piece. So the Berkshire Steps Initiative, the Safe Travel and Equity Plan for Streets, is the sort of running name of this initiative. Some of you may have seen the Draft Action Plan, which has now been finalized by the same title. I'll be releasing that for the NPO to consider for approval. It's also available now on the project website, berkshiresteps.org. So I encourage you to check out that website and some of the upcoming initiatives will have on that topic. I can I can drop a link in the chat at the end as well to make it easy. Number two is probably some of the big news you've heard recently is the Adventure to Ashwell to Cook Trail, the A2A Trail Raise Grant that just came through from the USDOT for a grant total of $17.3 million to do a planning, engineering, and permitting process for nine, about nine miles of trail between the current end at in Adams that you see in the bottom right corner. That's the current end of the rail trail and the new stretch of Williamstown Mohican Recreational Trail. So this will link those two sections of trail into one continuous 25-mile stretch of off-road path. And I'll get into more detail on that in a minute. Also keep an eye on Safe Roots to School, which is a great initiative through Mass DOT. We have a great liaison from you, from Mass DOT that works with us to plan bike rodeos, which are safety and sort of introductory events for kids at school to learn how to ride safely on their bikes. And other than school activities like video and sign design contests and a lot of cool things. So we have some bike rodeos in the planning process now for Pittsfield and Great Barrington. The Berkshire Bike Path Council is kind of the the public citizen-led side of bike planning. They meet quarterly. We just had our meeting last week for January. The next will be in April. And it's where we kind of also get to share these updates and hear from our stakeholders with State DOT, from us at BRPC, and others who are interested in more bike planning. Bay State slash Berkshire Bike Month will be coming up in May, and we're starting to plan out some events for that already, if you can believe it. We want to try and get a jump on that this year, so we hit the ground running May 1st. We had a great month last year, a great kickoff ride in Pittsfield. And we plan to do kind of a more weekly, like of the four weeks in May, we want to do kind of a larger event once a week, like Bike to Work Day, another kickoff ride, social ride. So keep an eye on those as well. In terms of Southern Berkshire County, the Lee Bike Way is still continuing through its planning process. It had been hitting a couple of roadblocks in terms of environmental and right-of-way. So it's around the 25% design phase, but that's still in the pipeline for the tip by 2028 or 2029. And on the heels of that, we want to also work and conceptualize how we could also link once the 25 miles is finished in the north half of Berkshire County, how can we continue that down into the south through Lennox, through Great Barrington, Sheffield, and hopefully to the Connecticut border. So those will kind of be in the works as time allows, as we can partner with our stakeholders and partners in the south. We'll keep working on those ideas. The Western New England Greenway, the WNEG, is also a multi-state initiative. It's a fairly recognized US Bike Group, US Bike Group Seven. You can see at the top of the photos here, kind of their seal and official signage that we've had installed on the Ashwell to Cook to designate that as part of the WNEG. So we're planning to continue installing signs along that route between the Connecticut border and the Vermont border. Right now, Connecticut has fully signed their route for all the major turns and confirmation signs. We want to continue that up north to Vermont. And then hopefully Vermont will pick up the baton as well and continue that all the way to the Canadian border. So keep an eye on that. We also want to do a bicycle level of stress analysis that reflects what Vermont has already done on their stretch to evaluate how the biking environment is along Bike Route Seven, which mostly parallels US Route Seven, mostly on quieter side roads. Sometimes it does need to share the highway. Or on the Berkshire's case, we have the nice off-street Ashwell to Cook to send people on. So we want to see how the different segments of the trail of the of the Greenway have different levels of stress, say, if you're sharing the road, or if you're on a side path, or if you're on a shoulder. So we want to see how people feel as they go through those segments and improve on them where we can. And finally, our neighbors to the north in Bennington are also studying how they might be able to utilize one of their old tri-lines that ran between Williamstown and Bennington to see if that's able to be implemented into a rail trail to further continue an off-road bike path all the way up to Bennington. So this is in the very early stages. They meet monthly. I usually listen to those. They've done some site walks, some planning and outreach for the towns like Powell and Bennington. And hopefully that'll continue forward in the next few years. So those are all the initiatives to kind of keep an eye out, either they started or hopefully will be starting soon. And things that have been completed or in major progress. As I mentioned, the Mohican recreational path in Williamstown, the ribbon was cut there, I believe, last last spring. You know, the trail was kind of complete that season before it was officially opened last spring. There's a view of that at the top right as it goes past Cole Ave. It has great access to housing there and the college campus just passed, as well as the Ashwell to Cook rail trail. The ribbon was cut there on the southern extension at Merrill Road just a few months ago, from the middle photo. And that's now the the farthest extent of the rail trail proper into Pittsfield. After that, there's really no more rail. It just comes into the active rail line. But there's plans to get that extended into Pittsfield either via side path or some combination of bike lanes between Merrill Road and East Street and downtown Pittsfield. So that's in the works as well. A northern extension of the Ashwell to Cook into Adams and North Adams to Hodges Cross Road is also under design. That's also at about the 25% level after it had also had to do some environmental assessments and right-of-way. We're hoping that will also be worked on in tandem with the the A2A Trail Grant as well to keep the whole stretch expanding at a good pace. Reconnected Communities has kicked off in North Adams. There's already been some work to get some traffic counts and an existing conditions analysis. That's with the the Route Two Center Street area downtown North Adams. And Pittsfield also just received a Reconnected Communities Grant as well to study the the west side of downtown. And I just bet there'll be, you know, bicycle infrastructure included in these studies, especially with North Adams. You want to make sure that we're all in coordination as the A2A Grant kicks off in the next couple of years here. Lee Complete Streets should be launching this spring. We have an agreement to start doing a Complete Streets Tier Two prioritization plan with the Town of Lee. So we're excited to start that up. That will be a state grant from Mass DOT to help them generate a a prioritization plan to decide where they want to see improvements for walkability, for bikeability, transit, all kinds of different projects. Ashland Street is kicking off in North Adams. It's a Complete Streets reconstruction. It's also going to be kicking off some processes for North Street and West Street in Pittsfield as well. That will have some bicycle accommodations, of course. So I'll just give a couple more details towards the Raise Grant. So that's kind of the big news from this from this past week. As I mentioned, 7.3 million, 17.3 million total award for design engineering permitting that will bring us to basically a shovel-ready state where we can then get the construction process going either through different funding sources, such as the tip, maybe another Raise Grant if it's still active in four years, any combination of funds to then continue implementing the final plan. But this really is, having this lump sum here at once is really extremely useful to get this all kind of planned out in coordination at once as opposed to kind of the the piecemeal that we've kind of been used to over the course of the past couple of decades, like one mile or two at a time. This will really help us to just get one efficient, coordinated plan together for this entire stretch at once, which I think will really be a game changer from what we've been used to. So as I said, it'll be about 9.3 miles between Lime Street, Hodges Cross Road, and then the Spruce's Park in Williamstown. And it's really going to be a complex web of coordination between three different municipalities, the two other infrastructure projects, the Reconnected Communities, and the flood shoot study is also going to have a big impact, especially the southern portion of the Ashwell to Cook between Hodges Cross Road and downtown North Adams. The railroad will be passing through that we're going to have to study and probably redesign the old pedestrian bridge that crosses the railroad. Right now, it's about 60 years old in a pretty pretty deteriorated state, so it's likely going to have to be replaced. And of course, we'll be working with our partners at Mass DOT as well as private entities like Mass Milka, Taurus Hotel. So it's going to be a big team, a lot of coordination, but we're excited to have everyone really on the same page here and thinking about how we can get this done. And so in total, there will be five components plus the bridge replacement, more of a zoomed-in view. We'll have the Adventure Trail in the west and then the Ashwell to Cook Trail north, running between the current terminus and downtown North Adams in more of a north-south direction. And then in the middle is going to be a downtown connector and that pedestrian bridge over the railroad. It's basically going to be like the golden spike that connects these two segments together. And this will be in coordination with hopefully connections into Williams College further, Clarkor Institute, hopefully MCLA as well. Greylock Glen, you know, we want to get all these different destinations as well connected as we can to encourage travel by bicycle. So some of the components that we're planning for, why are we, where are we spending, you know, the $17 million on? This really is one of the most complex segments of trail to date. As I like to say, the the easy parts are done. The straight rail trail has all been built out now. And this will be on either land that has not had railroad on it or has been some sort of post-industrial use. So we know there's going to be a lot of unforeseen and and unique things we're going to encounter during the planning process here. So it's going to be, you know, very, it's going to be well-spent, especially this section of the Adventure Trail. We're going to have to be crossing the Whozek River. There's the there's the concepts to get the tunnel under the Blackinson Mill property, which Taurus has already been working on as well in the background. We know there's, we know there's contaminated industrial lands with the Hyde Hill, I'm sure somebody familiar with, and Brown Street. So we're going to have to explore that and figure out mitigation strategies there. As well as that pedestrian bridge I mentioned, that's it's basically end of service life. We're going to have to redesign probably a full replacement for that. So a big portion of this is going to be studying the replacement and redesign for this overpass as well as the flood infrastructure I mentioned with the the Army Corps of Engineers flood shoot analysis. We're going to be likely passing close to the river here, an example being the the levees near Noel Field. Likely the the path will be on one side of the river or the other through here. So that'll be requiring coordination with the Army Corps. So it's going to be, you know, it's going to be, as I mentioned, there's a big web of coordination. And I think that 17 is going to be very well-spent and well-stretched. So we're looking forward to this really, you know, once in a, once in a generation process here. Oh, and one more, I'll give a quick, as I mentioned it before, the the Vision Zero Plan. As I mentioned, the final plan is now ready. The next phase will be implementation. And that will involve certainly bicycling infrastructure and and safety analysis and projects down the road. So please keep an eye on that. We're forming a working group to guide us through this implementation process. So if you might be interested in joining kind of a quarterly meeting of this working group, please submit an application and we'll take a look. And hopefully launching that in the next month or so. And that's all I've got. So hope to see you out there and we'll keep riding. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Nick. Does anybody have any questions for Nick? Any comments?
I do, Christine Rasmussen.
Hi, Christine.
Hi. I'm I'm all for bike transportation. I think there are so many reasons to incorporate it into towns. But as I'm looking at the South County map, and maybe I'm missing something, it seems to have the a logical route along Route Seven and some of the side areas, but it doesn't include Stockbridge. And I'm wondering why that isn't part of the plan because not only do we get a lot of bike traffic on Route Seven, but also on 102. And I don't know what's happening with the Josh. But certainly, building up to the Josh, their bike traffic in Stockbridge is pretty interesting.
As in like people training or the actual race?
Part of the race, I believe, goes, well, I know it goes through Stockbridge. And the training, people ride, you know, because we've got some good hills and some decent flats. And the problem is without bike lanes, we have narrow roads. And it's, you know, difficult even at times to walk. So it's something that I I just wondered about why it wasn't one of the towns that was being included.
Yeah, I'll certainly I'll certainly look into that. I know for the like official, like Berkshire Bike Path, the designated route is out of Stockbridge, down 102 through South Lee, and then up to the the proposed Lee Bike Way. So I know that stretch kind of originates in downtown Stockbridge, but then from there, there isn't really any kind of official connection, say, to Great Barrington or or out to West Stockbridge. So yeah, I'll certainly look into that. I know there's limited options. You've got Route Seven, 183 to go down south. And they're both either very narrow or very busy. So there's opportunities to look at either, you know, maybe a separated side path. There's some good examples in Massachusetts of infrastructure like that. Or expanded shoulders for bike lanes. So yeah, I'll make a note to look into that and see if there's anything you know, that's that's brought up Stockbridge in the past and we can incorporate that into a more, you know, into the holistic Berkshire Bike Path Plan. So thank you for letting me do that.
Thank you.
Next comment, question.
This is Sari from Sheffield. Hi, I just, I was glad to see Sheffield in included in the Southern Bike Path planning line there. And I just look forward to us meeting with you sometime this year, hopefully.
Yes, absolutely. I'd be happy to come speak with the planning board or, yeah, anyone who'd be interested in helping to think about next steps. There's things to consider like Mass Trails Grant applications, Complete Streets. So I'd be happy to walk through the options and see what's interesting going.
Great. We would love to set up a a meeting with the planning board there to to meet with you on that. Thank you.
Great.
Douglas McNally from Windsor. I I love the bike path, avid biker, so on. But we have to realize with some of the conversations we have, there are alternatives. When the state was upgrading Route Nine through Windsor and the latest thing, the town advocated very successfully have bike lanes put in the construction of the renovated highway. And it now has a very nice separated bike lane and it's it's beautiful riding. I think we have to keep that in mind for for some of these pathways where we can't cut something entirely independent, but we could put a wider shoulder with a bike path on 102 down south and some of the other things. So I think that that's important to keep in mind, you know, you know, dedicated bike paths are great but very expensive. And if you want to connect, we often talk in transportation about the last mile. If you want to connect off the bike path to get people home, getting safe streets and, you know, the state highways to have adequate shoulders with is also acceptable.
Yeah, 100% agree there. Like if if the bike path is the spine, we also want to see spurs coming off of it to get as, you know, far as you can, especially those last miles. So that's a great point to make. We'll definitely watch for opportunities, save for when there's repaving programs with some of these numbered routes. Be great opportunities to add in, yeah, buffered bike lanes or other options like that.
The state was very, very open when the town of Windsor approached them on it.
Yeah, that's great to hear. Yeah, we'll keep, we'll we'll model off of that.
Nick, on the the presentation, I made a note, but I I think I joined things together here. But how is the Lee Bike Way related to the entry you made about Lennox, Great Barrington, and Sheffield?
Are they? Sure. Yeah. So like I kind of mentioned, this is all just kind of conceptual at this point. We did do, we do have a feasibility study that looked at if the Lee Bike Way were able to continue north from downtown Lee. You'd eventually hit the Lennox border. And how would you get then from there, kind of through Lennox Dale and then up to the Pittsfield line? So there's been a couple of alternatives looked at to consider getting through Lennox Dale, either via like bike lanes or shared streets. There's an old tri-line that also runs up north of Lennox Dale. So that was kind of the link between Lee and Lennox. And then as as Christine pointed out, there's that we also have Stockbridge between And then as, as Christine pointed out, there's, we also have Stockbridge between Lee and Great Barrington, which I should also be a part of the connection then down to Great Barrington and then to Sheffield. So that's kind of just the concept of a line on a map, like a big treasure map dotted line at this point, nothing really specific, just got to get from here to there. How can we do that? So that's where we're at right now. Yeah, there's options as we've talked about now, like either buffer bike lanes, side paths, shared streets. So as we get a chance to meet with towns like Sheffield and others who want to pursue it via complete streets or mass trails, we can keep linking those pieces together. So if that makes sense, that's kind of, that's just kind of what's in my head right now. Nothing too more official than that.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have any questions, comments?
I saw Laura had a virtual hand raise.
I did. Yeah, I just wanted to, following up on Nick's presentation, I dropped a link into the chat. Providing everyone with the full press release about the race grant, if you'd like to read more about that and understand, you know, some of the, the route and the partners involved and, and how this all came together.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll proceed to the next item on the agenda. Thank you, Nick. The next item is about to approve the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission Fiscal Year 2026 Assessment as recommended by the Executive Committee at its December fifth, twenty twenty four meeting to include a two point five percent increase over fiscal year 2025. And the reason we're bringing this up now is to give the towns heads up as they go through the budgeting cycle for this year. So we wanted to bring that up to vote for tonight. I should also say the Finance Committee also wanted this increase. The details by town are in the packet. I will accept a motion in a second.
Don't move, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Second, Sheila.
Thanks, Sheila. And so we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments about the increase? This money's important to BRPC. This is one of the few non earmarked or, you know, designated pieces of money where BRPC can, you know, lend a hand. And, and, and so it's, it's pretty important. So. If there's no other comments, questions, then we'll proceed to a vote.
John Duval.
Yes.
Peter Trob.
Yes.
Mary McGurn.
Yes.
Pedro Pachano.
Yes.
Lan Yinger.
Yes.
Buck Donovan.
Yes.
Laura Menzey.
Yes.
Sheila Irvin.
Yes.
Sari Hoy.
Yes.
Christine Rasmussen.
Yes.
Don Gagnon.
Yes.
Doug McNally.
Yes.
And I'm going to back up Samantha Page is here from Williamstown.
Yes.
Thank you, Samantha.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next order of business then is the presentation about the D L T A program. Laura, are you going to?
Actually, I think that's CJ.
Yes. I didn't see CJ on here. I'm, I'm here.
There you are.
Let me, let me just share my, my screen and then we can get started. So one of the problems with multiple screens is thi- this isn't the full screen view, right? Not the presenter view? Lovely. All right. Good evening, everyone. So we're going to talk about D L T A for a little while. And it's a good time of year to put in a plug for it because we just have just over a month until applications are due. So we figured we'd give a recap of how we used our D L T A funding in 2024. And just, you know, remind everyone that a new season of D L T A is upon, upon us. So just as a primer, because some of you may be new to this, some of you have heard this year after year for many years, but it's always good to get a reminder. So D L T A, unlike most of our funding sources, especially from the state and federal government, runs on a calendar year cycle. So we run January to December. And eligible projects for D L T A fall in a number of categories. In this year's application, we provided links to try to provide more detail about what these things mean, but these are, these are pretty common and essentially what have been the priorities for the state to use D L T A funds for at least the last number of years. So the Housing Choice Initiative, which almost all of our communities did not qualify for when that was created, but that was, you know, activities around housing or are eligible through that. Community Compact Best Practices, whether you have a signed agreement with the state for, for a specific best practice or just looking for something that is consistent with their best practices. It's, that's pretty wide open category and a whole range of ways that can be used that are, you know, that BRPC staff could potentially help communities with. And then planning ahead for housing and planning ahead for growth, which are generally the more traditional community planning practices. So if there's a, some type of zoning you want to investigate or specific zoning, zoning bylaw or zoning ordinance that you'd like to pursue, staff could potentially help with that. We've used funds in the past to help prepare comprehensive plans and open space and recreation plans. And under the housing category, which we'll talk a little bit more about, really anything planning related to housing in our communities can really fit in that category. All communities are eligible to apply every year. I just want to remind people because we have gotten some questions from recipients in the past few years. All communities are eligible to apply every year and regardless if you've received funds in the past. And project size and scope can vary significantly. And we'll talk about some more specific projects, but you know, this can run from some very basic, you know, assistance that might take, you know, ten to twenty hours of staff time, not expecting you to, to really equate what that means. But you know, smaller scale projects, like you're looking for best practices of how communities have dealt with a certain type of situation. And, you know, helping with more of a smaller scale project like that to some of what we'll talk about, we did last year in the line, along the lines of creating a housing production plan, helping with elements of a comprehensive plan, helping with elements of an open space recreation plan. So it can be pretty wide ranging and, and size and shape of these projects really varies from town to town, year to year. Let's see. There we go. So in 2024, we received a very specific two hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars from the state. It was all divided, you know, these funds were all divided up amongst the RPAs and that's a pretty consistent number. It's the same amount we have in 2025 as well. Big surprise. But that, that number stayed pretty flat for at least the last several years. In 2024, we, we talked about, I sort of talked about this, but some of these were standalone projects that we worked on. And some of these were part of a larger effort, whether BRPC was doing the work as part of the larger effort, or if it was just a small component. So for example, you know, there's we, there was a project in Pittsfield this year where they hired a consultant and we, we sort of stepped in to provide some local on the ground guidance, but it was really a small piece of that project. But we've also stepped in to use D L T A as a matching source. So communities who are interested in a comprehensive plan or an open space and recreation plan, those, those types of projects on their own generally exceed the amount of funding we try to allocate to a project in a given year. But we can leverage D L T A funds to go after other funding sources, whether they, you know, local funding or through other various state grants. And that's been one thing that's been made very clear is that most of the state programs we work with often state to state, it's not that type of matching funds are not eligible, but D L T A is an exception. So it's something to also keep in mind. And in, in this year, a lot of our, and really in past years, a lot of the D L T A work is really diverted to projects that are traditional, more what you think of as community planning and housing related projects. But you know, this, this last year and past several years, funds have gone to our environment and energy staff for, for projects, economic development and, and GIS and data work. Sorry about that. My keyboard is not working. So just some, give some examples of projects that we worked on over this last year. So housing focused projects, that was a, a good portion of, of work that especially individual, like full on planning projects we took on in communities. So in, in Egremont, we developed a housing production plan, which was just approved by the state about a month ago. And in Monterey and New Marlboro. So Egremont, they had, we had worked on a housing needs assessment with Egremont a few years ago. And they wanted to take that, a housing needs assessment to the next step and really try to put some firm action items in place. And we did that through a housing production plan. And in Monterey and New Marlboro, those were both communities that were very interested in creating new housing opportunities and what options there might be. But hadn't done a lot of the work that Egremont had already done in this case. So we went with more, might have been, you know, more along the lines of a housing needs assessment, an action plan where it's sort of an initial step of really understanding the the demographics and what's going on in the community. And a lot of data focused on housing and starting to plan out initial steps of what the, you know, so the town can start preparing itself for what it can do if it wants to create new housing options. In Sheffield, we've been working for the last several years on a variety of housing focused planning work. And in this case, our work was very specific. We helped, helped along with some, some zoning amendments. And we sort of provide some other more umbrella housing focused assistance that didn't result in official plan, but part of that was setting aside matching funds for a grant that we went after from the state that we still don't have a decision on, but in a typical year we would have in the fall. And so we had put some funds aside to help increase the odds of the town getting that grant. And we're still waiting on a decision, but I just figured that was also sort of a good plug of, of how we, how we approach this. So in Sheffield, not to, not to get too deep into this, they're interested in understanding what their options are. So there's no wastewater system in town and they're interested in what, you know, in a rural community, what their options might be for pursuing some alternative types of wastewater systems in town. So we're going to, if the grant that we wrote is successful, between that and some of this D L T A funding we've set aside, we'll, we'll be able to help the town. You know, that's one of a few different things we've, we've signed on to do with Sheffield. Then we did a lot of work related to open space and recreation this last year. And again, it was a range of, of work. So in North Adams, for example, they had had a staff internal, more staff focused effort to create, to create an open space and recreation plan. And they were just missing some pieces and needed some additional assistance to really bring that project to the end. So they asked for some assistance with that and we were able to step in, help the city get the preliminary approval from the state on their OSRP. And really it lined up into another project where for those of you that have adopted an OSRP recently, it requires an, an up to date AD, you know, ADA planning work, you know, essentially a self evaluation and transition plan related to the accessibility of municipal properties. So that led to us going after some grant funding where we're now helping the city with an ADA plan that'll actually allow them to totally bring their OSRP to a close and get a final approval. So we can step in and help in those ways. But then we can use Cheshire as, as an example where over the past two years, we've actually used D L T A funds to bring their OSRP from start to finish. And there's still a little bit of work to bring that to a close this year. But really that project is almost complete. So again, we can approach this in a few different ways. Clarksburg, I'll put in a plug for that. Again, Clarksburg approached us about taking on a comprehensive plan, an open space and recreation plan, which again is above and beyond what D L T A can really do. But we were able to use D L T A funds to successfully receive a grant. So this really, we've already kicked off work in Clarksburg and over the next year we'll be developing an OSRP and comprehensive plan with D L T A being used as some match funding. And I'm almost done. I'm not going to read all of these, but again, just some examples of different types of projects. We've helped with zoning work. We've helped with green communities work, which is actually not listed on here. There's, I know some of this overlaps the last slide, but again, just trying to give everyone an idea of the, the size and shape of some of these projects. So leading into 2025, we have, again, funding is flat, so we have the same amount of funding available this year. Our application process opened up in early December. One of the things we've learned and that we got some feedback after really the last two years is that it would be helpful if communities had more time to pull together an application because especially for towns, it requires a select board approval. So we pushed this back about a month. So applications are due on February twenty first. So if you are thinking about or want to think about D L T A, you still have about a month to pull together an application. The application materials are up on the BRPC website. If you can't find them, we also did mass mailings to all of our, our email lists. So you, if you're on this call, you probably received the D L T A notification or hopefully you received the D L T A notification. But again, a reminder, regardless of you received funding last year and we helped with the project last year, there's no restrictions on applying. So all communities are eligible. And as always, please feel free to, to reach out to me if you, if you have any, have any questions about D L T A or projects. And I'll mention, because I know there's at least one community where we approved a project last year that we weren't really able to get off the ground. Generally, you know, we were pretty flexible with D L T A and while it runs on the calendar year, you know, we stay committed to seeing a project through. So I can think of in one case, we weren't really able to get the project kicked off this year. But as long as we hear from the community that they want to still, are still interested in the project, you know, shoot me an email and that, you know, typically we can just carry it over into the next calendar year because you know, our aim isn't to just rush to get things through by the end of December. I mean, it's nice to complete things by the end of December, but you know, it, it happens from time to time where we have to carry over projects and it's, you know, we've, you've asked for our assistance and we're going to do everything we can to, to follow through on that. So with that, I will stop talking and if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I did put a link to the solicitation in the chat if anybody wants to grab that.
Thanks, Laura.
Malcolm, you're muted.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a quick question. It's Sari from Sheffield. Well, maybe it's not a quick question, but I, I've been thinking about an open space and rec plan and/or updating our master plan. And I'm not a hundred percent sure what doing either of those things will put me in a position for possibly receiving or being able to apply for other grants. I mean, does, does having an updated master plan put me in a good position for applying for something particular? And the same question for open space and rec plan.
Yes, as, as planners, we always want, I, I, no, I, I was going to make a joke and I'll just step back from that. So yes, it does, seriously, it does. I'll start with open space and recreation plans because that's more straightforward. So if you don't, and I'll give you a brief sort of summary of, that, that plan's a little different than a comprehensive plan. So Massachusetts, open space and recreation plans, if you want to be eligible for different funding sources like funding sources, like if your community's ever gone after a park grant, that means you had an up to date open space and recreation plan. So an open space and recreation plan, once you've developed it, it gets reviewed by the state. It has to hit all kinds of different guidelines and address a whole number of specific topics. Once it's approved by the state, it's valid for seven years. And during that seven year period, you are, there's a few different grant programs that you are then, that are open to the town that range from, you know, essentially it could be open space, land acquisition for open space and recreation to more specific improvement of parks and playgrounds and things like that. So there's some programs like that where you really need to have an O S R P approved and in place to be eligible for. A comprehensive plan, you know, that's, it's great to have a comprehensive plan that's less than 10 years old because, you know, there's, there's a lot of value in going through a process like that for a community in general. But having an up to, a relatively up to date comprehensive plan, it, it does, it potentially gets you points. I mean, it allows you to have a, a better narrative for when you are going after grant funding for what, just about anything that is municipal focused. Because it shows that you've gone through a public engagement process. You've, you know, probably spent the better part of a year or longer than a year, really analyzing the current conditions in your community and then developing short and long term goals. So those are all things that when you've done that and you can point to that in a grant application, usually that's, you know, that's a real positive for anyone, you know, and, and we end up, you know, actually B R P C staff, we end up reviewing grant applications some year, state applications from around the state. And those are, you know, those are the types of guidance you get. Those, those are areas where you get points, when you can show that you've done that type of work recently.
Right. Thank you. And, and is it Sheffield who, whose project you didn't get to in 2024?
No, no, it's not. No, that, I mean, that's an example of funding. We, so we actually set aside match funding for three different projects that we are still, that from that source, in years past, we've had decisions over the summer or at worst, early fall. And it's now middle of January and we still don't have decisions. So we had put aside some D L T A funding for, you know, for our work in Sheffield and some work in Great Barrington and Pittsfield that just had, did not come to fruition. So, you know, we ended up reprogramming some of those funds.
Good. Thank you.
And sorry, just so you know, I've heard that a D L T A application is coming in from Sheffield to essentially set aside matching funds so that you can do both of those projects, hopefully starting next year, later this year.
You were Brett about that. Thank you.
Hey, any, anyone else have any comments or questions? Now that you got CJ here. Okay.
And the, and in the silence, if anyone has A D U questions or needs help, reach out. We have set aside some D L T A funds because we know, I mean, we've been getting questions for a while that we've been responding to and trying to provide guidance, but we have set aside some funds related to A D Us. So if you need immediate A D U help, please just reach out and, and we'll do what we can.
Well, that's a good segue to our next item on the agenda, which is discussion of accessory dwelling unit by law activities in the municipalities. And this one, we're going to turn it over to the commission delegates and alternates to talk about what they've done with A D Us. I, I could actually kick off with what we have in Great Barrington. You know, I went through our A D U regulation and I, I don't really understand all of the state regulations at this point, but we've had an A D U regulation, a by right A D U for several years now. And it's by right in all, all zones, including commercial and industrial. It, it's allowed by right for single and two unit structures. So you can have up to three residential units on a property by right. The one, the area where we've come into maybe potential conflict is we require a special permit for pre-existing non-conforming structures for A D Us for that. And I believe that the way the regulations are written now, written now, that's probably not allowed. We also allow more than one A D U for farm dwellings that, if they can be used solely by farm employees. So I don't know if that is also prohibited. I'm not sure. Then our parking, we allow one, we require one parking space, but it looks, and based on Tom, Tom's memo, it looks like the A D Us are, if they're near a B R T A, B R T, where anywhere where B R T A goes, you don't need any parking at all. So that, that's, that's, that's where we stand. And I think we have some things to clean up, but. Anyone else have any, anything you'd like to say about the town or any questions about where they stand?
Yeah, this is, I'm still.
Sorry, go ahead, Doug.
Windsor is still struggling with clarification over something that was said at one of the presentations. We, we are pretty much in compliance. We had to change the, the occupancy regulations, but other than that, our, our bylaws were pretty good, except for, we, we had a statement in ours that no more than one A D U will be allowed on any parcel. And that seemed to be okay with their regulations until they did their seminar where they suddenly said that if you had already approved an A D U as a, under a special permit prior to it, because it didn't comply completely, maybe it was a little larger or you had setback problem or something like that, that, that didn't count. And, and that parcel was still eligible by right for another A D U. And that just seems wrong. And so we are, we are tempted to stay with our statement that no more than one A D U will be allowed on any parcel without subdivision. So I, I just, I just wondered whether anybody else was struggling with that. I mean, with, we, we have no town water, no town septic. So the, the problem is if you start putting two A D Us and one primary residence on a, you know, three acre piece of property, which is the, the minimum, you have problems with setbacks between wells and septics and so on.
Anyone have any comments on that?
Yeah, we, we, we actually just had a special, you know, did a planning board meeting just on sending in comments to the state and getting those in in time. And their definition, I think it, like the B R P C comments also, the definition of where the dwellings are accepted was a little vague and, and misleading, you know, and the, the special permit, we, you could have a dwelling under special permit and how they had it written, somebody could have an A D U by right, which, you know, like Doug is saying, it, it also, it's similar to that. It doesn't seem, except, you know, that doesn't seem right. It's, that still should have to go through a special permit. And we have a A D U bylaw right now. That's one of the issues we'll have to deal with is most of our stuff's under special permit. So we'll, we'll clean that up as soon as we know exactly what they have. We don't really want to put a lot of work into it until we know what the state's going to come up with for a final decision.
CJ, do we know when the state is going to, and do we know what final is actually?
They, they claim that the regulations they put out are, are final now, but they made, they've made absolutely nothing more clear. I mean, they muddled it worse, actually.
So the last we heard was that, you know, the public comment period ended last week. And I, I was just looking through this again, just to see if there, if there had been any updates because I didn't look in the last two days. I'm not seeing that they are actually final. And our understanding was they were going to, because they were receiving so many comments. I mean, the public hearing was just on Friday, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
So the public, so that they're going to need some time, but what they told, what they've told us multiple times is that the final regulations would come out before February 2nd. But is that going to mean February 1st? You know, I, I'm not sure. So I, they've, they've tried to make this as simple as, I, I understand it's not. I, I think their intent is they've tried to make this as simple as possible. So my guess is they are not going to make a ton of changes based on what they've already pulled together because of how that their approach in trying to draft those regulations, whether we agree with them or not. So I hope that means, but you know, it's just a hope. What's my hope worth at this point? Not sure. So I, I would expect though, that in the next two weeks, we're hoping to have them because we, you know, we've been helping out with a few different bylaws and, you know, some of the question marks hinge on what their final decision is on, on what they state in their regulations.
I mean, if we get them in February, we have plenty of time to make changes, you know, bring changes to town meeting. But if they come in March or April, then it gets more difficult.
I, their intent, and I believe them. I mean, they said they were going to do that. I mean, it would have been nice if they had done a lot of this faster, but they said they were going to do this. And so far they've stuck to, once they started giving more specific timeframes, they seem to have stuck to it so far. So when they say they'll be out before February 2nd, I, I, I believe that'll happen.
They seem to indicate that although the new regulations, the new logs go into effect February 2nd, that they, they know that towns haven't had time to actually act on the bylaws. So it, it's going to be interesting to see if somebody tries to jump the gun on some towns bylaw between February 2nd and when the town meeting actually votes on amending them.
That will be interesting.
Doug, as, as I'm going through it, the, the state law considers unreasonable anything that is beyond the underlying district. So your underlying zoning district. So setbacks, coverage, bulk and height, all of that stuff stands. So if you have a lot that can't accommodate an extra building because you'd be covering too much of the lot according to the underlying district, then you're allowed to say no. And another thing that, that the state says in here is that, you know, it continuously says things like for an environment, for your septic point, that it considers anything beyond what the state would require to be unreasonable. So in other words, to deny an A D U beyond anything that the state would otherwise require. So if you check with their board of health and your septic can't handle another unit or another two or three bedrooms, and if it, if you can't put it on a lot where you position it within a hundred feet of a well or within, I can't remember how far you need to be away from your septic tank. I don't think very, that's going to be restricted, but from the well for sure, then you're okay. So you're talking about small lots. I wouldn't, I don't know that I would be worried about having, you know, three or four units on a, on a two acre lot or a one acre lot because the state is not going to force you into doing, again, anything that's more restrictive than what the state would require. At least that's what I'm reading in all this language in here in the draft.
Well, one of the things that came up in our discussion is if the, the parcel is actually large enough to accommodate three dwellings, three leach fields, three wells, it's probably large enough to be subdivided. And so my, my board's position is, is this, is this a, a bypass to subdivision approval? I mean, if, if you've got, and in Windsor, I mean, I live on 60 acres. My neighbor lives on 37 acres. The guy on the other side says 45 acres. This, this doesn't, doesn't affect us because if, if we wanted to put a second residence on, you just do a, you know, no, no, you know, a by right subdivision and, and with, with frontage and acreage and so on. So it's, it's just, it just, I, I just think that statement that, that if there's an existing A D U, this allows an additional one by right, just makes it very unclear for us to deal with anybody applying for. And Pedro, you're right, we can go and, you know, debate it and get the board of health and getting involved, but I just think it's sending the wrong message.
Hey, Mary, you had your hand up. Thank you.
Egremont is finishing up the first phase of two phases, which is overhauling our entire zoning bylaw. It happens to coincide that their February 2nd deadline for the state is two days before special town meeting. And our special town meeting, because it happened when it did, we were able to reassess our A D U bylaw, which we've had since 2020. And we have worked it at this point to, I would say basically comply with what we anticipate is going to be the state's position on the 2nd. Doug, the question you raised about a by, an existing approved by special permit, A D U is a situation that came up in our thinking because Egremont has actually has, has that situation. And I did discuss it with CJ. We approved by special permit, a 1,200 square foot A D U on a property in Egremont. And because there was a slide, and I remember that slide you're referring to in the webinar, they called out a 1,200 square foot special permit A D U is not counting towards a by right A D U, which immediately was a flashpoint that we had a property where the owner, if they complied still with the setbacks, the height, the frontage, you name it, all of that, septic, everything, they could go ahead and put a second structure, which would mean on one property, we would have three structures. So I did flag that to CJ for some clarification, and I don't know where that's going to end up.
Well, Mary, as I'm reading again, it's the second statement of purpose. In it, it says, "The Act establishes that in certain circumstances, the use of land or structures for A D Us are protected from zoning restrictions by providing, the zoning shall not prohibit, unreasonably restrict, or require special permit or other discretionary zoning approval for the use of land or structures for a single A D U," or the rental thereof in a single family residential district. That's, to me, is the bulk of this law. It's one building. It's not, you know, 20 buildings on a 30 acre lot without subdivision.
Yes, but they, they, that's what I'm saying. They muddled that in their presentation. So that's exactly the interpretation, that, that language is why we put the language in that, that no more than one A D U would be by right.
I think it really depends what requirements you attached to the A D U because I, I just pulled up, because Mary had sent me the slide. And, and this is why I, I don't, they've muddled this, but I don't think it's the intent. So I, and that's why we wrote our, you know, the comment letter the way we did, that this should really be clarified in the regulations of what the goal is of E O H L C so that it's clear either way. Not that we would agree if it was interpreted the way that there's concern about on this, you know, and, and over the last few minutes. But what Mary had said is 1,200, you know, if pre-existing A D U meets the standards of a protected use A D U, prior conditions may not be continued. So that's how I viewed it, is that you have to strike any conditions. But one of the examples they give is a 1,200 foot, 1,200 square foot A D U that was previously approved with a requirement for family relationship is not a protected use A D U, and such requirements may continue to apply. But to me, it does, it's never. But to me, it does, it's never made sense that they would allow this to happen as an end. If the, that should just be stricken out. And I think the reason they didn't do that is because if that goes away, the concern is at 900 square feet, it's not really, not that a family couldn't live in 900 square feet. But I, I think the way they've worded it like this, it's to protect situations where someone was guarding against a larger A D U to be used as a, you know, a primary dwelling or a second dwelling versus an A D U. So I, I think depending on what the requirements are attached to whatever was approved of the special permit, that might inform you of how it would be interpreted, you know, if, if your bylaw was challenged at some point. But hopefully they clarify this because it is not clear at all.
Hey, thank you, everybody. Does anybody else have anything to contribute? Okay, well, good discussion, a lot of questions remaining, but hopefully we'll get them resolved quickly. The next item of business is the report and possible discussion of the executive director's report. I believe there were two items on the report this time, the raise grant, but also a link to transportation funding support. I, I haven't looked at this yet, but it looks intriguing. I'm going to, it seems to outline where all the transportation funding sources come from. Does anybody else have anything to add on that? Okay, then we'll go to our final item of business, which is our adjournment. I'll take the motion in a second. So I move. Pedro.
Second.
Thank you, Sean. Sometimes I think nobody, the people don't really want to adjourn. Yeah, can we do the vote, please?
Yes. John Duvall.
Yes.
Peter Traub.
Yes.
Mary McGurn.
Yes.
Pedro Pachano.
Yes.
Sorry, Leanne Yinger.
Yes.
Buck Donovan.
Yes.
Laura Menzey.
Yes.
Sheila Urban.
Yes.
Sari Hoy.
Yes.
Christine Rusmusson.
Yes.
Don Gagnon.
Yes.
Claxton Mathad, I believe. And Doug McNally.
Yes.
Windsor, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And 8:18, we're adjourned.